Good morning, everyone, and thank you for joining us for the meeting of the Tulare County Board of Supervisors. We will now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence. Today, we will be led by Supervisor Shucklin.
Thank you, Chairman. Please join in saluting our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invincible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Okay. The first item on our agenda today is Board of Supervisors Matters. And today, I will actually start Board of Supervisors Matters. And I wanted to begin today's meeting with a formal apology that would be on the record of the Board of Supervisors and formally apologize to my colleague Supervisor Valero and to anyone in the public who may have been offended by my choice of words at last week's meeting. You know, I've worked for 12 years on this Board of Supervisors, and I think this board is held in high respect. And I know that during times like these where constituents are not able to come to a board meeting and observe the meeting and watch, they listen even more closely to each and every word. And whether it was said jokingly or in jest, we talk a lot on this board and go back and forth and have a lighthearted attitude normally. And I would never say anything that would be insensitive or hurtful in any, anything that I've ever said in the 12 years I've been on the board, or whether here on the dais in jest or out in public. I take great pride in representing this very diverse county. And I do work very hard each and every day to represent all constituents. And I do so, and I take great pride in doing that very well. So I do understand the insensitivity and know that I will work to continually improve myself going forward. I take great pride in the fact that even though I've been doing this for 12 years, I never once have gone a day without learning something. And it's like I teach my kids at home, learn something every day and better yourself as you move forward. So that's what I will continue to do. I want to also highlight a couple of events that are taking place this week, even though things are still locked down. The Retirement Board meeting will be held tomorrow at 8:30 at the Deserre Board Chambers. The International Agro Center Board meeting will also take place tomorrow at 4:00 PM out at the International Agro Center. On Thursday, April 23rd at 10:00 AM, First Five will be having its commission meeting. That will be a Zoom meeting for anyone who's interested in participating. And then on Friday, I will be participating in a conference call with the San Joaquin Valley Association of California Counties with the Governor's Office slash CalOES. This is a follow-up to the call that all eight chairmen of the Valley Counties were on last year, highlighting high priority issues for the San Joaquin Valley and how the state can assist us, making sure that the state is aware of various issues of significant importance to the Valley. And look forward to a positive outcome from that conference call. I will now go to Supervisor Shucklin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The last week's been somewhat busy. We had our homeless task force meeting last Wednesday by call-in by Zoom and Facebook Live. We had some good information and some good questions asked by the public so far. We do have some hotel motel space leased should we need it for any of our homeless population that comes back COVID-19 positive and/or those who are considered a high risk or vulnerable due to age. So I'm happy that we're getting things going there. I also participated last Wednesday, and I will tomorrow also at 4:00 PM every week. I'm on a call with CalOES, and it's an opportunity, well, we get updates typically, you know, stuff we all have heard before, but it's nice to be able to, at the end of that session, to be able to ask any questions. So should any of you have any questions that you'd like me to ask, I can certainly do that during those calls. Tomorrow, I have my Tulare County Economic Development Corporation meeting. And then on Friday, I will be attending, of course, electronically, the TCEDC Economic Summit that's typically held, it was going to be held last week with economists, but unfortunately, due to COVID-19, it was canceled, but we will be doing it electronically this Friday. So that's all I have for now.
Okay. Supervisor Valero?
All right. Thank you, Chairman. And at this time, I'd also like to make some remarks with regards to last week for the record. And this is something that I did share via social media, but I've also included additional comments to this. So I want to thank all for reaching out during this time. I want to offer my heartfelt gratitude for your commitment to community, care, and a shared concern of what transpired last week. Within a few hours of our public meeting, our Chairman Pete Vanderpoel reached out to me to sincerely apologize for his comments on the dais. Although his comment was in poor taste and shouldn't be reflective of our conduct in board chambers, I accept his apology and know that he will learn from this mistake. Why? Because words matter. I hope he is committed to educating himself on implicit bias and the effects it has on members of our community. I appreciate his assurance to work with me and our colleagues to move Tulare County forward together, especially in this time of need. I also want to make two brief comments here. First, throughout my educational experience, I have been affected and impacted by remarks made about my ethnicity. And although I heard this constantly, it reminded me last week that sadly, such comments are much too familiar, but nonetheless inappropriate. Thankfully, we have people in our communities who will remind all of us on this dais and in elected positions elsewhere that words matter. Second, when people ask me about leadership and their interest in running for positions to better their communities, I often share that leaders, myself included, cannot become comfortable in our positions. Why? Because the moment we become comfortable is the moment when members of our community begin to question our leadership. But I can assure Tulare County that I appreciate our Chairman's assurance to work with me and our colleagues, again, to move Tulare County forward together, especially in this time of need. And with that, I also want to make remarks in terms of some kudos to our communities, one being Traver. I want to applaud Traver Elementary for its first-place overall awesomeness finish on the library project for Step Up. Teacher Liz Rodriguez has worked tirelessly to promote literacy as king in her school. She took the challenge to challenge students on a community project, and so I just want to applaud her and the Traver community. I know that the students were able to give a presentation to Darla Wagner, including myself, a few months ago in terms of their project and need, and it was a great presentation. So again, great job, students and staff. I also received an email from our California Public Utilities Commission. And as some of you may know, yesterday, Governor Newsom announced cross-sector partnerships to support distance learning and bridge the digital divide. They will be using information submitted by districts in the Small Districts Association survey. And the CPUC has a list of 10 priority communities that came out of the Communications Division Broadband Gap Analysis. And I'm excited to report that three towns in Tulare County are included in those 10 throughout California. There is a deep concern with the inequities being experienced due to the digital divide during this period of quarantine. And so the CPUC is hoping to prioritize these communities in some of the decisions about where CPUC resources are allocated if and when appropriate. And so I'd just like to acknowledge and celebrate the communities that have been selected. And these communities in Tulare County include the city of Lindsay, the community of Early Mart, and the community of Ivanhoe. So great job, and we will continue to work with CPUC in hopes of garnering those funds to bridge the digital divide. And then lastly, I do want to encourage us to continue filling out our census. I know that this is a remark that I mentioned yesterday at our TCAG meeting. When looking at the data as of April 18th, California is at 51.4% response rate, and self-response for Tulare County is 46.4%. And I just want to encourage everyone out there that is listening, it only takes no more than three minutes of your time. I know that when we often think, oh, the census and pages and pages of documents that we have to report, but if you fill it out online, it takes no more than three minutes. So again, continue to share that with your friends, your family, because it is extremely important in terms of the resources that come in back to our county. So that is all I have, Chair, and thank you.
All right. Supervisor Crocker?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last Tuesday, the Chairman and I participated in the Farm Bureau Youth Leadership's annual study session or learning session to try and understand more about local government. We participated via Zoom. I want to thank our CAO, Jason Britt, as well as our Ag Commissioner, Tom Tucker, for also being a part of that. I thought it was worthwhile and still continuing on using technology despite the fact that we're not necessarily meeting in person. So that was very good. The one key takeaway, I think, from that that I just share with others is that I encourage them to be ambassadors for agriculture and not only, and not to assume that everyone locally understands what the importance of agriculture is. And while they have, or they're not in school, to get more involved on their family farms if they have that. And if they don't have a family farm, then to, you know, talk with some of their friends that may and see some different aspects of horticulture or animal livestock that they may not be familiar with. So Supervisor Townsend and I participated in a forest health call, just an internal call with county partners from the, with Fire Chief Norman, Nancy Woods, who's been leading our forest, our tree mortality task force for several years, as well as Denise England, who's heading up some of the forest health projects. And I thought it was a very good discussion in regards to what were some next steps, how we make sure that we maximize state funding. And I think there's some good follow-up to make sure that we're working on projects. Thursday, the Air District, we had our monthly meeting. There were, there was quite a few different items that had some fairly good significance on them. One is that we're allowing for more prescribed burns, and we reduced and eliminated fees for prescribed burns. One of, and that's why utilizing methodology and looking at the consequences of catastrophic fire and what that would happen. So if we're encouraging more prescribed burnings, then the theory is you're eliminating prescribed or you're eliminating those via prescribed burns. So we took that, so that should help out our forest managers, our public lands managers that are regularly trying to get those in the queue. So that should be good, as well as we also took up some economic relief efforts for, during the COVID-19 pandemic, to be able to reduce fees. I won't go through all of them, but there was a number of reduced fees or waiving late fees for air permits, no late fees, as well as there are paybacks, some grants and incentives that we provide and rebates. There are payback provisions if you sell a piece of equipment before its useful life. And so those are being waived just because we recognize that some people may need to sell equipment sooner rather than later, just because they need cash. And so being able to have that, as well as some usage requirements. There are requirements on the equipment that you're not going to get this big rebate or incentive, and then it sit on the sidelines that you're supposed to use it, but recognizing that there's a lot of equipment that's not being used as much during this. So those were some of those parts. And then there's been a lot of talk from a regional level in regards to an inland port, particularly at Merced County and at the former Castle Air Force Base as an economic driver, bringing in more shipping containers and usage from the Port of LA and the Port of Long Beach. That, the study that was instituted by the Air District was completed. There were lots of other partners involved with it, including the Central Valley Community Foundation and others. It was, there was an outside firm that was hired to conduct that. And in part of that study, although it wasn't reported on during the Air District, there is a portion of it that talks about depending on where the northern hub is, that there may be a need for a southern hub, and it specifically identifies Tulare County as a possibility. And so being able to have a rail spur in an area where we could take containers and really distribute that, the idea would be, and potentially, we could be reducing some of our truck emissions by upwards of 80-plus percent just because of the amount of volume that's required. It's really phenomenal how many trucks we could get off the road. And we have a unique situation that we actually tie into the Bay Area market for the northern hub. And so that would, basically, we would have about 500,000 equivalents of truckloads that would be coming and going both ways, and it's almost equivalent. So about the same amount of loads that come into the San Joaquin Valley and the Bay Area also go out to the Port of Long Beach and the Port of LA. And I think that's kind of an important note for railroad companies, because they want to see that there's some type of equilibrium. It's not just all going one direction or the other. So very positive things, that could be a huge benefit to our area if that comes to fruition. So that goes into the next phase as far as taking a deeper dive. This, and then yesterday was TCAG meeting. We, the major item of significance was the transit consolidation. JPA is sending out to all the members, so that'll go to each of the eight cities, as well as to the county. And we'll be looking at that and looking to next steps as far as consolidation and saving additional money on the transit side. This Friday, the, there's an economic forecast that I'll be participating in. And next Monday is the East Coia Groundwater Sustainability Agency meeting. The last thing, it's not meeting-related, but I just, I gave them kudos yesterday at the TCAG Board meeting. And Assemblyman Mathis and Senator Hurtado have been very helpful during the county's response. I was able to speak with both of them last week. And, you know, I looked to our director and his update to see whether or not some of their asks at the state were able to come to fruition, but I believe that many of those have put pressure so that the state's answered our call. So with that, turn it back over to the Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Crocker. Supervisor Townsend?
Okay. Oh, it's already on. There we go. Thank you. All right. Just to, I'll also echo that what Supervisor Crocker shared about the, on the 15th, the conference call regarding forest health. And I was just going to thank everybody that was on that call. For me, it was very helpful just getting into it sort of upfront with, to get the information from Nancy Woods and Chief Norman and Denise and Supervisor Crocker. And then Sam was also on the line taking notes, so she followed up with some notes on that. And it was just to try to sort of wrap our minds around what we need to do next on forest health and the money that's coming down and some monies that we still have out there. And I think it did help to kind of clarify a few things on the projects that we have ongoing and then some projects that we would really like to go after. So that was a really good meeting. And then on the 20th, we had the TCAG, is also a couple of mentioned. And beyond the transit consolidation, one of the things that stood out to me as well was just the projections on the loss of measure R fund revenue, just because we're, you know, not driving as much, not buying as much fuel right now. So having to get creative on how to sort of backfill some of those areas. And I really appreciated Ted Smalley coming up with a few out-of-the-box ideas for backfilling. And we've got some more work to do, I'm sure, before this thing all completely shakes out. Been taking just a lot of calls and emails and texts about where we are with the county and what the timing's going to be looking like, how we're doing with coming through the virus and what, you know, when we're going to be considering sort of reopening plans. And so people have been asking a lot about that, as well as businesses now really beginning to ask more and more about the payroll protection program and some of the other programs that are out there to help. Because they're starting now, efforts lagged on for a little bit, starting to really feel those impacts. So we'll do all that we can to help. And then also, there's been a lot of interest, a lot of buzz about the Porterville Developmental Center, about the project that's ongoing there that the Corps of Engineers is handling with getting 246 beds ready to go. And they are moving along on schedule, looking at the 22nd for the day that they'll be done, which is an amazingly fast schedule to get that taken care of. Hopefully, a lot of the facility won't have to be used after they get it done, but it's there and ready and doing some great work. And also had a call with Julie Tone from AT&amp;T, just about what they're setting up out there for their communications, for their temporary communications, and how that will lead to some future better service. I was joking that, oh, maybe that's going to clear up the dead spot I have by Success Lake. And she said, well, no, that's not included right now, but it's the first step in getting there. So in the long run, that'll help. And then today, I'm going to run over to HHSA and record another short video clip, as we've all been doing, and really try to concentrate on giving some thanks to all those people that are out there still working in the midst of this and in the midst of some fear for their own health and things that they've just been stepping up and really selflessly working on all of our behalf. And so give them a little bit of thanks for that and hope to the rest of the community that we are getting through that. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you very much. We will now move on to Item 2 on the agenda, which is a request to receive an update from the Health and Human Services Agency on COVID-19 status and response efforts in Tulare County. Mr. Lutz?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Board and CAO County Council. Tim Lutz, Health and Human Services Agency Director, here with a few items for the Board this morning. First, getting into the report on updates over this last week. Currently, as of this morning, we're at 436 cases. That's an increase of 47% from prior week in comparison purposes. Last week, I reported to you our increase was a 95% increase. We also unfortunately have seen an increase in deaths up from nine, up nine, I should say, from last week's number for a total of 22. On a positive note, our number of recovered have started to increase significantly as some of those early cases that we were identifying are now making recoveries. And we're currently at 62 recovered, and that's up from 15 at last week's report out. And then we have 513 people who remain under self-quarantine. On our skilled nursing facilities, and that has, last week, definitely garnered the bulk of our focus last week with First Redwood Springs and then last Tuesday, also Lindsay Gardens. We, we the county, and thank you again, the Board members who did assist in reaching out to legislative leaders and the county administrative officer for doing the same, had a coordinated effort to try and push that we needed state resources to assist us in addressing the concerns of both Redwood Springs and Lindsay Gardens. And just for update purposes, Redwood Springs, as of this morning, 172 total cases. 109 of those are residents, 55 are staff, and eight are in that other category. On Lindsay Gardens, the number this morning is 40 total cases with 32 residents, six staff, and two others. The, understandably, both of those facilities have garnered a lot of our attention and concern, which is why we wanted to push to the state that we need additional resources. The good news is by, after a day, I would say, of that pressure from both our side at the bottom up and then from the Board and CAO side at the top-down, we were able to get results. We had CDPH assign a person to our doc, our operations center, to support communication with the state. We also had an infectious disease analyst that was assigned to help monitor these facilities, provide on-the-ground training on a continual basis and monitoring. And also, very importantly, we got resources from California Medical Assistance Team, or CALMAT. And the CALMAT team is comprised of nine individuals that are at Redwood Springs. Five of those are EMTs, two RNs, a director, and a logistics chief. And then Lindsay Gardens, we have 13 individuals assigned, six paramedics, four EMTs, a director, a PA, and an admin officer. The, this team is specially trained to deal with disaster response and to coordinate the assistance of care at those facilities. Also important to note, there's been a number of media requests or misinformation. I'll characterize it as us having more than those two facilities as outbreaks. For clarification to the Board, we've had since early on, some of our early cases and continued throughout this incident, a facility that might have one case. And at this point, we continue to monitor those facilities. I believe in total, there are four in the county that have one case. And again, some of those are four or five weeks old, some of them are a week or two old. Just because we have a positive, if the facility's implementing proper protocol, it should be able to still mitigate and manage the spread of the illness across that facility. The important thing is being vigilant and using proper protocols with PPE. I did want to touch briefly, and I actually have a chart to show the Board real quick, of gotten a lot of questions on new cases. I kind of wanted to show everyone where the county is trending versus where the state's trending, just by way of how we're tracking. In general, you can see this is, we started March 18th. We had cases before that, but it was our one case a day, zero cases for a few days, to align with what we were seeing from some of the state reporting. We're starting at March 18th. And tracking out, you can see where we have those spikes around the 11th of April. The state had similar, they, we started to see trending a little earlier than them on our spike, but continually on both sides, see that ebb and the flow of an increase, then a decrease. We get either clusters or more testing that starts to be indicative of either identified community spread or a cluster of individuals. Felt it was important to give you guys this information just to help put clarity around our new cases per day and kind of where we're trending. In general, it's hard to say, going back to Tulare County locally, it's hard to say that we're in a definitive decline. And in fact, to some level, the more testing we do, the more cases we're going to get. But that's not always a negative indicator as much as, as long as we can identify them early and have proper self-quarantine for their contacts. So I have gotten a lot of questions on that. proper self-quarantine for their contacts. So I have gotten a lot of questions on that piece, and I wanted to at least share with the board kind of some general metrics and statistics in that area. Then quickly, for updates, we had 50 media inquiries last week. We did conduct the Spanish Town Hall, which I continue to hear that there was very well received and appreciated. And there's discussion about maybe coordinated a follow-up town hall to answer some additional questions that continue to come in. Also presented information at Senator Grove's Tele Town Hall. And as Supervisor Townsend alluded to, a number of supervisors have come in to do videos. And we're more than happy to, to continue to coordinate getting those pushed out for the board. Think it's important to note, since February 25th, the county has been covered in over 440 news pieces centered around COVID-19. So there's definitely been a lot of media attention. PDC, of going, moving on to our logistics and medical facilities, PDC, we have a walkthrough scheduled again today. Our understanding is all six buildings have been completed. And the next steps are now getting equipment and staffing to bring the facility into operational status. On our homeless liaisons, we have currently 60 rooms available for placement of individuals. We have four more hotel agreements that are in process, and our hope is to have those finalized next week. And we're going to be working on coordinating mobile testing with Quea Delta Street Medicine Team for our homeless population. The business liaisons received 78 calls last week. Continue to get calls, emails about businesses that are open, that are questions about whether or not they're essential. And also, we're seeing an uptick continually of calls reporting restaurants and stores not enforcing social distancing, or employees not wearing masks or gloves. When we get those, typically, then our business liaison group will reach out to that business directly, provide assistance on, on social distancing strategies, way to reduce any, any physical contact, like paper currency exchange, things like that. Our public health lab has conducted 1,913 tests. 1,648 of those are for Tulare County residents. And then we distributed 27,895 items of PPE this last week to one hospital, six skilled nursing facilities, three clinics that are performing COVID testing, four clinics that are, community clinics not doing testing at this point, and three other essential businesses. Total costs at this point, 916,361. And for clarification, that is total costs, our personnel costs are 530,350. The remaining costs would be materials, supplies, equipment, those types of items that we're procuring to respond to the incident. So then briefly on human services overall, Tulare Works, our, our application statistics show that 30% of applications this last week were first time applications for services, and 11% of the applications haven't saw services in over three years. Again, trying to drive down to the, the broad impacts of COVID on the economy, the fact that we're seeing so many new clients at the, at the same time. Lindsay District Office, the board will recall, had been closed, where we had a couple employees that were exposed. We reopened yesterday on the 20th. And that's after the facility had gone through a few cleanings. And the staff that were turned to work had been on reserve status for 21 days. The goal there, again, ensuring that everyone who was returning to work was not sick, or if they did contract the illness, it wasn't through exposure at, at the facility or at the office. On our aging and adult services, there's some activity going on here. We're developing through in-home supportive services, a wellness check-in program for our 5,000-plus IHSS clients. The goal will be a team of staff that are making regular calls to our IHSS consumers, just to do status checks, make sure there's not issues with their provider, make sure they're not sick, help coordinate care for them if they need to go in for testing. And then on the senior services program, we received augmented emergency funding from California Department of Aging. Those are specifically for home-delivered meals. Total received for Tulare and Kings County, since this is through the area agency on aging, is $334,000. 78% will be for Tulare County and 22% for Kings County. And then on behavioral health side, continue to see higher volume. We're, we are now seeing an uptick in crisis calls. Initially, crisis was, we had slower volume, however, which is approximately 150 calls per week. Last week, we had 167 calls. We continue to monitor that closely, as again, that's another key metric for us on the overall well-being and health of the community. And then we do have, in terms of our locked facilities, our IMDs, we have seven consumers who are waiting for placement. That does create a challenge for us with no facilities taking new patients. At some point, there aren't additional places for us to be able to put them. They're in a hospital acute setting like, like Quea Delta Mental Health, not ideal. And we're hoping that we can start to get some movement on placements through our IMDs. That concludes my report. I did have one item as, as follow-up from last week on geographic breakdown in cases that I wanted to present to the board. I can do that first before questions, or I can take questions if you'd like them.
Actually, should we, you guys want to see the breakdown first, and then we'll, we'll go to questions? Yeah, let's see that, Tim.
It's really, it's quick. I just wanted to, to show you guys, in terms of, the, the question was, can we start to break down statistics by cities? And there, a lot of the cities are asking this question. And in talking to our counterparts across the state, this is a question that's happening everywhere. I had mentioned last week that we were exploring it, recognizing with PHI, we have some limitations. Currently, the map up there is how we're displaying information. And we're doing it based on these regional categories of South, North, Mountain, then Greater Porterville, Greater Tulare, Greater Visalia, and then the mid-county. And our goal there was to try and capture the, kind of the essence of some of those populated areas, but also not provide enough information that it violates PHI. What Fresno County has been doing is displaying by zip code. It's actually not technically by city. The zip codes line up with the city, but it's actually by zip code. What we looked at then is conceptually, if we did it by zip code, this is a mock-up, and again, this is a draft, it's based on old information at this point, so as to not create any PHI problems for us on converting to this new model. But basically, if, if we did that, this is what it would look like. What you'd start to lose is some of the individual numbers where you saw them in here, where you have individual counts of certain areas. Because of PHI, if there are fewer than 11 cases in those zip codes, we can't actually report out individual numbers. So you would actually lose some, some information that, that you're getting right now. But instead, this kind of trends it on a heat map, where you see a range, you know, 120 to 140, 90 to 120, 70 to 90, to, to try and show what the concentrations are, but not necessarily specific numbers. What I wanted to garner on feedback from the board is, would you prefer, and we can certainly shift to this method, or continue to report it at the, at the way we're reporting the information, recognizing that neither is, is completely ideal. But we're also working through guidance from California Department of Public Health and laws over HIPAA and PHI.
Thank you for that follow-up, Tim. And that was a question that we had had last week. So a few questions that I wanted to ask, that I had throughout the presentation that you made. On the tests, we, we've started to report a number of recovered individuals. What is the process? Is every individual that's tested positive asked to come back in at a, at a certain point, or after they're feeling well, to be retested? Or are these people that voluntarily come in and say, hey, I just want to make sure that I'm free of coronavirus or COVID-19?
Take a couple paths. Healthcare facility workers, if they're in the healthcare field, the agency is requiring they go in and be retested twice to have two negative tests. And the rationale there is, again, we don't want to put a healthcare worker that has tested positive back in an environment where they could infect others. For general public, they have to have, it has to have been 14 days since they were first had the positive test, and they had, have to not have had a temperature for three days within that period for it to be counted as a recovered individual. So that's why we're starting to see more as they've met that 14-day threshold for us. And they are, they no longer have a fever, and they're general, they might still have a little bit of a cough, or, you know, something like that. But in general, they are, they're recovered at that point.
Okay. A question on the assisted living facilities. I know that in the county, there are several facilities that have staff that rotates amongst facilities. Are the counts between the facilities, Redwood Springs and Lindsay Gardens, that have multiple cases or an outbreak, are those unduplicated? Or are those, could that be inclusive of, say, a worker that's COVID-19 positive, that may have worked a shift at Redwood Springs, and then gone over to Lindsay Gardens? Checking on that.
Our, our counts are unduplicated at this point. That you are absolutely correct, that facilities do share some staffing. We've been coordinating calls with all of the skilled nursing facilities in the county, and advising that they need to not share staff, recognizing that creates a hardship. And we're trying to provide assistance of volunteers to come in and, and to work in those areas, or volunteer to work there, basically, at that facility to backfill challenges that they might have. But out of an abundance of caution, sharing staff is, is a huge problem.
Okay. Thank you. And then I've been getting numerous emails from members of the general public who are concerned for their own health and for the health of individuals out in public that aren't wearing PPE. Have you thought about, or has the public health department thought about any, any type of guidance to put out to general members of the public here in Tulare County, given we are unique in terms of how this county is situated in the state of California, which is very diverse in terms of population densities, et cetera? So that members of the public here in Tulare County can see any sort of guidance for how they should conduct themselves, wearing PPE, or masks, some kind of face covering when they're out in public?
So this is a topic of, of amends discussion through our, our DOC and some of our, our subgroups. As we start to align ourselves with what the governor's office has put out on the roadmap to reopen, testing is one of the key areas, but then also protection of, of those in the public is another. And masks and other PPE are a key factor in that. We've hesitated on requirements at this point, given the, the shortages.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't require, just in terms of guidance, because I, because I think that one of the interpretations that I see in the governor's six points to outline to the road to recovery and reopening, I do think that the guidance that we could put out as a county would be guiding or suggesting vulnerable populations utilize some sort of a mask or face covering as they do go out in public. Some, some kind of guidance would, I think, be helpful, and also in a bilingual fashion as well. Yeah, sure.
But I will go one step further, and I know that this may be a little bit of an issue for others. But if so, when will we require Tulare County mandate that everyone wears face masks? And again, the reason why I say that is because apparently, our stores have been more packed than ever. And we still have families going to stores in droves. And in addition to that, some, some people are respecting the health and safety of themselves and others by wearing face masks, while others are not. And then if everyone exercises a safety procedure set forth by the CDC, we're apt to open the county again soon. So that's just a concern that I have, that I've been getting from a lot of individuals, residents in our county, that, again, it's just, it's, it's very different for one person to another. And again, our stores are extremely packed when you go into Lowe's, Home Depot, Target, Costco. And again, and encouraging only one per family, rather than having all the family go all at once. And so I think we still need to, to go further in our, as you were saying, guidelines. But to what extent and, and how much?
And I appreciate those, those questions, because it is this, this balancing act of requirements versus guidance. I know we've, we've put out a lot of guidance on, our, our strict recommendation is you should wear a mask when you're going out in public, if you're going to the grocery store. Families should try and have one person go, two at the most, if, if they need assistance. I, I think we can work to broaden that message, because clearly, if people are still saying they don't feel like they're getting the guidance, we're not doing well enough to, to get it out there. But there is that, that fine line, then, of, do we start to, say, require, as, as you kind of alluded to, of some of those more vulnerable populations? The challenge is, the mask really is, particularly the cloth masks, are not designed to necessarily protect the vulnerable population. It's designed to prevent the person who's asymptomatic walking through the grocery store from getting others sick. So the, the goal then would be, everybody should be wearing the mask, because the idea is you could be, you could be positive with COVID, not realize it because you don't have symptoms, and the mask is helping to, to reduce the, the spread of germs.
Okay. And then lastly, just a question about homeless outbreaks. I know in Tulare County, we've been relatively safe, and we don't have any that we're aware of. Are there areas in the state of California where COVID-19 has broken out and significantly amongst homeless populations? Is that something that is constantly being monitored very carefully here in the county?
It, it is. And I know there, right now, and that kind of gives us some concern, which is why we're trying to work on doing some, some testing within the population, is there are a number of, of spots where there's outbreaks. Not surprisingly, in larger cities where you have large congregations of them, beyond just Los Angeles, I know San Diego, I believe, and San Francisco, but then a couple other Bay counties that have experienced some pretty significant outbreaks, which is part of where, I think, last week, the governor did a press conference at Santa Clara, in part because of their, their outbreak of, of COVID amongst the homeless population.
Okay, thank you. That's it for my questions. Thank you for answering. And thank you again for all the work that you do in, in trying to make sure information is spread out there in the public. I know that it never can seem to be enough, as we get contacted from folks who don't seem to be receiving that information. But if you weren't doing anything, then we'd really be in trouble, because obviously, a lot of people are receiving the information that you're putting out. And thank you to you and your staff, and also thank you to all the frontline personnel out there who continue to deliver very valuable services to our residents during this very uncertain time. So thank you, Tim.
Well, thank you. On behalf of them, we all appreciate the support, and we continue to strive to do better every day.
Thank you. Supervisor Shuckland?
Yeah, well, I don't disagree with Supervisor Valero as far as the masks and mandating folks. I, I think, again, it's that enforcement part. Who's going to enforce that? So just wanted to throw that out there. But back to the mapping, I'm very satisfied with the way it's been going with the regional. I think, you know, I know a lot of people want to know, well, what city, what city? I think, you know, I know a lot of people want to know, well, what city, what city? And personally, I don't know why that's so important. I think that it can cause folks to say, well, there's none in my city, so I'm safe to go out and do whatever I, I want if you get too specific. So back to that, I'm fine with the way we've been doing the mapping. That's all I want to say. And again, to reiterate what the chair has said, with the staff has just done an incredible job throughout this whole ordeal.
All right. Thank you Supervisor Shuckland. Supervisor Crocker?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you Director Lutz for another very thorough and very good update. I have several questions. On the mapping, I know we're providing for specific, like for Lindsay Gardens, for example, that they have, they have enough cases to provide that. So I'm okay with the regional, what we're doing now, but if, if it's possible even just to share with individual cities if they are over that 10 mark, to share with them, to those officials, you know, not necessarily just for their own reference, because I think that's where the, it's generally coming from is, is, you know, cities want to know, okay, should they be doing something more? And obviously, if they don't meet that threshold, then that's, then they're probably, you know, okay as of right now. So that'd be my comments on that. As far as some of the other parts of the, of the presentation, the, on the logistics activities, you mentioned the amount of PPE that's been distributed. How does that compare to our needs? How many more needs, is it four, five, 10 times, what, you know, more that we actually need?
So the metric that we usually try and track that against is how many days of PPE our key facilities have. Ideally, we would be out around the 30 days and I can say that we're closer to the six to 10 days in a lot of cases on that PPE. So recognizing that there's a large shortage, we try and put in the orders for what we expect to need. And I shared last week where we're getting a fraction of those orders, we're seeing things trickle in a pallet or two at a time. Over the weekend, we got a couple deliveries. So we're definitely still, still in need of PPE for our facilities, for us to have that level of comfort of if we had a large surge, they could, they could address it because doing testing, given the infection control measures, their PPE burn rate is far higher than it normally would be anyway. So I can try and put together some, some good metrics for the board on that piece because I recognize the number sounds impressive, but without context, it's, it's hard to really appreciate, is that good, is that bad? So we'll, we'll work to try and provide better context for you on that.
And then just a question, and I'm not sure that you may be able to answer this, but the outlook, could you kind of share your thoughts or what some of the department has shared on the outlook for Lindsay Gardens? I mean, I know we, we had a discussion last week in regards to that, that was just showing up. Are we, you know, we're up to 40 total cases there, 32 residents, that's, that's over a third or roughly a third of that facility. Are we looking like it's going to get similar to Redwood Springs? Or are there other practices in place that, that we think that it's, it's going to plateau fairly soon?
I wish I could answer definitively on that question. The, the challenge we have, a lot of the exposures are ones that if they're now testing positive, they were exposed before we even knew of the outbreak. So I will say we have been very aggressive at, at getting containment or mitigation strategies in place there, moving residents that are infected to areas, isolating them from non-infected population. We have gone through and tested every single resident of that facility at this point. There are a few tests pending and our numbers went up this morning because of some of those tests pending. So now the, the key for us though is that's good in that we've tested everybody, but the concern is we have had instances where somebody that tested today negative and two, three days, they're positive. So the Calmat team will help a lot there. Having 13 additional staff that are trained in this type of work is, is very helpful for these facilities that just aren't accustomed to dealing with, with this type of an outbreak. The infectious specialist from the state continues to do site visits, continues to provide training. So if, if we're following those, those guidelines, the ones that were not already infected by the time we started to see the, the symptoms manifest on that first one and they got tested, we hopefully can see a decrease in that spread. The key is how many of them had already been infected before all of these efforts were underway.
Maybe shifting a little bit more positively, and I know you said that you showed the graphs that were, show fluctuations as far as the new daily cases, but there, it has been, with the exception of today, now showing a little bit of an uptick from the previous days that the past six days, again, with the exception of today, had, had each a ever declining number of new daily cases. So are we thinking that we've reached our peak or our surge or what? Is there any thought or discussion on that? Do we need another week or another three days before we can make that determination? Or what does that look like?
We, I think we definitely need some more information. The key variable is, again, in order to feel comfortable on reopening the economy, the state wants to see more testing. Our focus this week is going to be heavy on testing. We have a call this afternoon with the state to talk about that very discussion about how do we increase testing across the county? And with that, I think it's important that we'll probably see an uptick in the number of confirmed cases, but I think an important measure that we're going to start to want to look at then is how many of them are in the hospital, how many of them are in the ICU versus individuals in the community that, that have it, are positive, but otherwise able to stay home, get over it, recover and, and go about their, their daily lives. So I think there's, there's a little bit of that false sense of we want to be testing higher based on all the studies that we're seeing on serology tests, that the prevalence is much higher than the original projection showed, but that's also a higher number of people who are asymptomatic or just think it's, you know, seasonal allergies, you know, mild cold or flu. So I think that is one measure that we look at in combination of some of those other key ones like hospitalizations, like ICU beds. And those numbers, we are showing positive trend on along with the state, but I do think we need another week to really see how the trending unfolds.
So that, that kind of answers some of the other questions. So I guess the, my last question is more a follow-up. So what are the, what are some of the roadblocks that we need to resolve to get more testing out? What, is PPE still going to be a challenge as far as, I know, based on the numbers that you provided us this morning, we, it looks like we actually tested, or we had fewer tests this past week than the previous two weeks. So we have capability to test more, why aren't we doing that?
We do. We, we do have capacity for testing. Part of the reason we've seen a decrease is commercial labs are now doing more testing and that's, that's positive because we can prioritize. What we've been intentionally doing is having a little bit of slack on our local lab for, for instance, so we can test all of Lindsay Gardens quickly. So there's some strategic benefit to making sure we have some local testing, that we can have results turned around in a day or less. But the biggest barriers beyond the PPE is the, the testing kits to actually do the swabs, the medium that has to then, you know, contain and preserve that till it gets to the lab and then the reagents used for testing. And a good example, yesterday, I know UCSF put out that they're going to be offering free testing to all, all counties. The challenge being when asked about testing kits, they don't have the testing kits to give the local health departments and it becomes then a supply issue. So our, our push to the state really is, we can set up as many testing sites as you want, but if we don't have the collection kits and the reagents necessary to do that testing, people are idle. And, and I think it creates that false sense of security on our side that we, we can do the testing when right now we just don't have enough supply to be able to do the level that we should be.
I'm going to be giving out $300 bills later today. I just don't have $100 bill yet, so give out.
Yes, that is, that is a great offer, thank you. Where are you going to be?
Supervisor Crocker, you done? Does that wrap it up? Okay, Supervisor Valero?
Yes, thank you. So first, I do want to echo a comments made by Supervisor Crocker with the information to share with our city managers. Again, if it has reached that point where information can be provided, I hope that we can inform those city leaders with the most accurate and best information possible so they can also make their respective decisions on how to move their cities forward. The first question that I have is, would it be possible, and the reason why I'm asking these questions, because I did a brief survey of all of the different county websites when it came to COVID-19 and some things that we may be lacking on our end, but just wanting to see if this is possible. Would it be possible to include COVID-19 testing site locations on our website? And is that something that has been considered?
I'll be honest, I don't think it previously had been considered. I think it's a fabulous idea and we're, yesterday, we were working to compile a, a complete list of all those sites. And once we have that list, I think it's a good resource to put out there and we'll get it put on the website.
Awesome, thank you. And then also, would it be possible to include a donations tab on our website where people can donate and the county can accept items like face shields, hand sanitizer, N95 masks, surgical gloves, surgical gowns, et cetera? That was something that I, I noticed on other county websites, a donation button.
Yes. We can work through that. And the key always is who receives it, who processes it, and we can work through some of those logistics.
Okay. And then what, and this is a comment after our chairman shared about contact tracing and, and whether or not someone has been identified as positive and how we follow up. So what is our success with contact tracing and how have we been tracking exposure?
Our, I mean, that's probably a subjective answer on my part, so I'll put out that, that key caveat, but overall, I feel that we have done really well on contact tracing when you consider the core team has been the core team from the get-go when we had two cases, one case up to our, our current number. So what we're, what we're having to do is some prioritizing in terms of high, high risk. If we have a food facility that has a positive, we're going to spend more time on contact tracing and coordination than we would if it's an individual that we already have a pretty good idea of they've been at home, not in the community, not, not a lot of contacts. That's where we have brought in some, and from the support of other departments, some district attorney investigators to help with that, talking with probation about potentially using some probation staff to, to backfill some of those tracings. But I think the team's done a great job of continuing to keep up with that despite, you know, huge volume increases on a, on a daily basis. Because you figure, you know, if you have three or four contacts from every positive and you're getting 20, 30 positives in a day, it adds up to a lot of, a lot of tracing work.
Okay, thank you for that follow-up. Do you think Governor Newsom's remarks are accurate, that Tulare County has become a hotspot in the Central Valley, particularly with our Redwood Springs Healthcare Center in Visalia and now with our Lindsay Gardens?
I think unfortunately, in terms of skilled nursing facilities, I think the governor's comments are accurate where we have right now, based on the state metrics, the highest number of infected residents at a facility with Redwood Springs. And it's, again, a tragic and unfortunate situation where, where we've been pushing hard with the facility and the state to make sure we had resources to try and help. Again, with that understanding that by the time it comes to our attention, a lot of times that infection has spread pretty wide and far.
Okay, thank you. And then another question is, do we have the capability to include a sign-up for COVID-19 updates from Tulare County as soon as residents visit our website? So this is a tool being used by Merced County. As soon as I went onto their COVID-19 website, there was a pop-up that said, fill out your information if you want to keep up, being updated by the county. So that way, people don't necessarily have to go directly to our website, but we can send them that information directly.
And you said that was Merced?
Merced County.
I'll look to see what, what platform they're using to do that with, and I think that's a great suggestion.
Okay. And then also, I know that Redwood Springs has been a major subject of discussion, but I want to transfer our focus to QUA Delta as well. And apologies if you don't know this information directly, but how is QUA Delta handling their staff being infected and what precautions are they taking that can be shared in hopes to help others? As you know, we were notified that QUA Delta had 21-plus of their employees tested positive. So do you know the precautionary measures that are being taken at QUA Delta?
Yes, and an important caveat too, where those infections have been spread over, you know, the, the course of this incident. So it, as far as we have seen, this isn't a cluster of suddenly a large group got infected. I think, given they're the largest hospital in the, in our community certainly, and the number of patients they have going through there, unfortunately, it's not, you know, it's not impossible to, to never have cases. I think they've done a good job of, of identifying when they have cases, isolating it. It hasn't expanded heavily into their patients that we've seen. And I think it, it speaks to their mitigation strategies that it hasn't blown up to a much higher level. So yes, we do continue to work very closely with QUA on any of their positives. They're very proactive in identifying their own risk assessment. And the risk assessment is really the key piece when we have a positive in a medical facility because that's looking at, those are the most complicated in terms of our contact tracing because you're literally talking about a medical provider who's seen 50, 60 patients that day, if it's a LVN or an RN, and trying to go back to determine what level of contact they had with each of those individuals. So it's a, it's a monumental effort to undertake it, particularly with an organization as large as QUA, but I think they have done a good job at, at identifying when they have positives and mitigating. One of the things that all of our hospitals have at this point is the ability to do immediate testing. So the, the machines that we talked about early on, that the Abbott machine and other similar types of machines that let them get a positive result in five, 10 minutes, that's what the hospitals use a lot of times to try and screen their workers. That way, they can identify potential risk right away and isolate that person.
Awesome.
And, and the other measures that, that they are doing is, again, requiring masks be worn by all staff, doing temperature checks. If, if you're looking at how to, how to manage the spread the most efficiently, those are all measures that you would want to have in place.
Okay, well, thank you. And just as my colleagues have, have shared, I want to echo their sentiments by saying
And just as my colleagues have shared, I want to echo their sentiments by saying thank you to Tulare County Health and Human Services for the work that you're doing and for keeping us informed and updated as we progress through this. So thank you.
Well, thank you.
All right Supervisor Townsend?
All right, thanks Tim. Appreciate the updates each week and also the daily updates that we get. So we're, in fact, I just want to throw that out as a comment with when we're talking about the, you know, the overall guidance on, you know, on what to do and the masks and the, you know, the hand washing and the social distancing and all of the things that we hear. I actually kind of come from the other side. I think that we've done a fantastic job of pushing that out in not only the county, but I mean, between the county, the state, the federal government, every single business that advertises on TV or on the radio. It's like, I can't go for, you know, if you're watching any kind of media for 10 minutes without hearing those things. So essentially, in my opinion, it's just a personal choice of what people are doing that we're seeing out there. I don't think there's much more we could do in the way of guidance. I think we've really put it out there. And I want to commend you and your staff for how much information that you have put out there. I know you've been working tirelessly on that. So thank you again so much for that. Secondly, when you were mentioning the mental health and looking for placement, was PDC one of the considerations since they're going to have a lot of extra facility?
Unfortunately, it wouldn't meet our normal criteria for the IMD placement. These are typically locked down facilities. Those that are severely mentally ill, a lot of times are conserved clients through our LPS process. So usually there are, and that's part of the challenges, it's very hard to find those facilities, hence why they're spread across the state for us, as we just don't really have many locally.
Yeah, yeah, okay, all right. Just kind of popped to mind because I know they have so much going on and that they're, I know they're thinking about 29 of those beds specifically for even people that are in the skilled nursing facilities that need to be offloaded out there. So just wondered if that was another possibility. But that's really all I had, other than again, thank you so much for all that you're doing.
Of course, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much and thank you for that very short and concise report, Tim. Much appreciated. We will now move on to take up our 9:30 timed item, which is at 10:10 now. Yeah, I'll go back to a public comment, just note that we have a timed item on the agenda right now. Item four is a public hearing, a request from the Health and Human Services Agency to consider proposed fee adjustments for the Public Guardian, Public Health, Health Operations and Environmental Health divisions for the fiscal year 2020, 21, 2021. Before we open the public hearing, can I please have the clerk provide instructions to members of the public on our temporary procedures for today's meeting?
Yes, thank you Chair Vanderpoel. To members of the public, if you wish to participate in today's public hearing via telephone, please call 559-636-5045. You will be connected to the boardroom to address the board in the same manner as if you were here in person. Please state your name and address for the record in order to be heard by everyone in the room. Your statements will go out on the live audio stream and will be included in the audio recording of the meeting. The timer will be set to three minutes, so please adhere to the time limit. If you choose not to call in, you may also participate by submitting an email as this item is being heard. Emails should include the sender's name and address for the record. Emails should include the following in the subject, Agenda Item Number Four, and sent to the Clerk of the Board's email at clerkoftheboard@co.tulare.ca.us. Every effort will be made to read your comment into the record, but some comments may not be read due to time limitations. Comments received after the public hearing has closed will be made part of the record, if received before the end of the meeting. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That concludes the instruction for today's public hearing.
Okay, public hearing is now open. We will take the first, at first, the presentation from our Health and Human Services Agency. Following that, board members will ask any questions related to the presentation. And then after that, we will open up the meeting for public comment and then we can come back to the board for discussion and questions. And after that, we will take up an action. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Rob.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, CAO and County Council. I'm Rob Stewart, Director of Fiscal Operations for the Health and Human Services Agency. Here to present today are proposed fee adjustments for fiscal year 2020, 2021 and conduct the public hearing on that. As the board directs, we review our fees, our charges for certain services every year and bring forward those appropriate for adjustment. Want to recognize and thank the County Auditor's Office, County Council and the County Administrative Office for reviewing our fees prior to coming to the board today and approving us to proceed to this point. Under the statutory notice provisions, we did publish notice in the Visalia Times Delta. The first publication was on April 10th, giving a 10-day notice, and the second publication was yesterday, April 20th. We are proposing fees, fee adjustments in the following divisions and programs. We have Public Guardian, Vaccines for our Immunization Program, Public Health Laboratory, Healthcare Centers and Environmental Health, and I'll go through them in that order. Overall, we are proposing 48 new fees, 45 fee decreases and 31 fee increases. And I do have two corrections that I'll make through the presentation. First, in our Human Services Branch, the Public Guardian Representative Payee Program. This program provides financial services for conserved individuals or others receiving Social Security benefits. The program helps them receive their Social Security income as well as pay bills for housing, food, clothing and so forth. And these fees are approved every year by the Social Security Administration at the federal level. We are proposing one fee increase to the Representative Payee Fee. I would like to note also, if clients do not have funds available after we've performed the service and paid bills or for any other reason, we do not collect the fee for that month and we do not collect the fee retroactively. So we're proposing a change in the current fee of $42 to $44. Typically, there's a $1 per year increase in the Social Security Administration. We did not bring this forward last year, so we're requesting the dollar from 2019 and the dollar from 2020 for a $2 increase for 2021. This is a 5% increase and we estimate our percent cost recovery at 84%. Next is our Immunizations Program. This is our travel clinic. We provide vaccines to individuals who elect to get these vaccines. These are typically paid by the individual receiving them or by health plans if they're covered. In this program, we're proposing three fee adjustments. It is for our rabies pre-exposure, our typhum V and our influenza high dose vaccines. And you can see the, these are all increases, 33%, 3% and 4% increases. Vaccines, the cost of the vaccines fluctuates frequently throughout the year, even within a given month. The actual cost of the vaccine can fluctuate dramatically. So we arrive at these by doing a five-year cost analysis, looking back at what the cost has been of each vaccine over that five-year period. And then we look at the most recent year and what the rate of increase or decrease of each vaccine was within that year and apply that to get our projected rate for the upcoming year.
You want to ask your question Supervisor Valero?
Say, why the big increase in our rabies? But do you see it as consistent across all sectors as well, even if you were to go to your kind of private clinic versus here? Or has, has it increased substantially?
Yes, yes, this is based on the actual costs. So the cost that we pay to procure a particular vaccine supply is the same or similar cost that any other provider would pay.
Okay, thank you.
Next is our Public Health Laboratory. They, as you know, provide community health surveillance and medical testing as well as help support outbreak investigations. As you know, they've been very busy through the COVID-19 pandemic. For them, we are proposing two new fees and 63 fee adjustments. Of those 63, 40 are decreases and 23 are increases. We are proposing a shift in our methodology for the Public Health Laboratory fees, similar to what we do with our healthcare centers. So what we are proposing is using, recognizing that more of the services and tests that they provide are covered by health plans. We would like to adopt the rates that are already established on the Medicare fee schedule and the Medi-Cal fee schedule. And this is one of the oversights that I want to correct here. We had published in the Agenda Item in the PowerPoint that that rate would be 150% of Medicare and absent a Medicare rate, it would be 150% of the Medi-Cal rate. That should be 100% of the Medi-Cal rate. So 150% of the Medicare rate, if it's on the Medicare fee schedule. If it's not on the Medicare fee schedule, we would then bill 100% of the established Medi-Cal rate. And this methodology has been used by our healthcare centers since 2012, so we're aligning the public health lab methodology with that as well. That's consistent with the fee schedules used by the federal Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services as well as the California Department of Healthcare Services. And other counties in the area that uses a similar methodology for their labs include Fresno, Merced and Kings. So those fees, the two new fees are measles and influenza. It's not that these have not been provided at the lab, they have, but they've been for public health surveillance activities and no one is billed for that. We're requesting that they be added to the fee schedule so that we can provide them to health plans and business pay partners who request those services for non-surveillance purposes. And then here, I'll advance through these sides pretty quickly here. These are the 63 adjustments, again, 40 decreases and 23 increases for a public health laboratory. And the only one, I want to note, the only one that is affected by that change from 150% of Medi-Cal to 100% of Medi-Cal is our trichrome stain fee, which is here, 88313 trichrome stain. That is the only fee out of what's before you today that is not on the Medicare fee schedule and the Medi-Cal rate would apply. Next, we have our healthcare centers. These are federally qualified health center look-alike clinics. These are based on procedure codes out of the Public Health Services Act and are based again on Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services and California Department of Healthcare Services rates, along with locally, local prevailing rate standards that are set based on geography, cost of living and some other factors. We've used this methodology for our healthcare centers since 2012 and ensure that they do not exceed the cost of providing these services. For the healthcare centers, we are proposing 21 new fees be established and seven fee adjustments. Of those seven fee adjustments, five are decreases, two are increases. And of the 21 new fees, five of those are for Anthem Blue Cross Health Education Services. These services are being requested by Anthem and they will be provided free of cost to all patients of the clinic regardless of their health plan or insurance of any kind. And no one will be billed except for Anthem will pay the cost for those under the Anthem health plans. And the reason for the other changes are based on, again, changes to the Medicare and Medi-Cal fee schedules here. So you will see some dramatic as a percentage increases and decreases when we get to the adjustments and that's the reason for that. So the 21 new fees are listed here. You'll see some of these like weight management, that's one of the five new Anthem Health Education benefits being provided. And then the seven fee adjustments here. Again, five decreases and two increases based on changes to the fee schedule. Next program is Environmental Health. This division is responsible for inspecting, monitoring and enforcing many regulations for health and safety out of the State Health and Safety Code. For this division, we're proposing 25 new fees and two fee adjustments. I'll talk in depth about the new fees here in a moment. The majority of those fees are for our food safety program. We're proposing a change in our fee schedule for retail food facilities and restaurant inspections to align actually with our current inspection process. So the current methodology is based on the size of the facility. For restaurants, it's the number of seats. For other retail facilities, it's the square footage in our current fee schedule. However, inspections are done based on a federal Food and Drug Administration, FDA guidelines that's based on risk, based on the complexity of food preparation, the type of service they provide. And that corresponds then with the number of inspections that our staff are doing at each facility every year. As part of this process, the Environmental Health Division conducted outreach to these businesses in the community. They held three public outreach meetings. They sent out emails notifying all the businesses and soliciting input from them. I believe there were seven businesses that attended the outreach meetings. They sent out a survey to the businesses as well and received 30 responses to those with feedback on them. Of course, some in favor, some in opposition or having concerns about them. And again, this would align our fee collection process with the number of inspections that each facility receives every year and corresponding to the risk level that they are already currently assigned for that risk process. This slide demonstrates the risk categories. So category one is considered a low risk. These are facilities that have prepackaged foods. They're not doing any food handling or preparation and they undergo one inspection per year. Category two is considered a moderate risk. These are facilities, you can see some examples here, retail food store operations, schools, quick service operations such as fast food. They have a limited menu. They, most of the products are prepared or cooked and served immediately. They have TCS, which is Temperature Controlled for Safety, so foods that need to be kept either cool or heated until they're served. And these types of facilities receive two inspections per year. Risk category three is the higher risk. That's the full service type facility, full food preparation, handling of raw foods and so forth, cooking and serving those. They have to meet some additional requirements because they have more specialized processes that they do for the full food preparation level. And these facilities receive three inspections per year. So with this shift, we anticipate that about 70% of food businesses would see a decrease. Those that are smaller, for example, to pay a fee based on their square footage for retail facilities, number of seats for restaurants. If they are maybe a larger facility, but they're a lower risk category, those would all see a decrease in their fee. And that corresponds again with the number of inspections and the rigor and time involved in inspecting their operations. So therefore, about 30% would see an increase. So, therefore, about 30% would see an increase and we calculate that average increase at about $33 for those businesses. We would bring forward at a later time, the corresponding, again, about 25 or so, about a one-to-one ratio of what we're proposing in new fees today that would be deleted going forward to phase out of the square footage and seats model into the risk model. On these next slides, you'll see the fees listed here, so the new fees. And this is the second correction I want to make. The top one there, the retail facility no prep, actually is the same as the low risk. So, I'd like to request that that one be deleted from this request. It's duplicative. So, the retail facility, low risk, moderate risk, and high risk. And then on through the other types of facilities. So, bars, you'll see the same risk categories, restaurants. And then we have some additional types of facilities that are more specialized, such as bakery. And then we have temporary food events, those that are doing multiple events, single events, hotel motel continental breakfast only, deli fish or meat department, and additional food prep operations, which is any facility not covered by any of those special categories there.
I do have to say that if I'm going to get into the food preparation industry, I'm definitely not going to operate in an in-vessel digestion facility. Have to pay a $4,392 fee, no thanks.
We'll get to that one. No, nobody in the food industry is paying that one.
Okay.
So, the next three, the Registered Environmental Health Specialist hourly rate, the Specialist Supervisor hourly rate, and the Office Assistant. These are hourly rates that we are requesting for investigations, whether it's a household hazardous waste type investigation of improper oil disposal or investigation into a foodborne illness outbreak at a food facility. And this would allow us to bill those violating facilities for the time that it costs these sta-, that these staff are spending conducting their investigations. And then going away from our, sorry, one too far there. Out of the food safety program, this is actually our Environmental Health Solid Waste Program that has the in-vessel digestion facility. This is a new fee that we're proposing. We have had one facility that does in-vessel digestion come online since last year's fee hearing. Up till that time, they've been grouped to, or they've been assigned to the fee that most closely resembles the type of inspection that an in-vessel digestion facility would undergo. And that is our transfer station inspection. The difference is the inspection station is a monthly inspection and in-vessel digestion per our local enforcement agency requires every 90 days or a quarterly inspection. So, it's less frequent. Currently, that one facility, it's the facility in Pixley. They're paying the $8,000 or so fee for the transfer station. So, there, they would see a, a big decrease in what they're paying. We just didn't have a fee established for what they do because there was no facility in the county that did that up till now. And, and that service, our staff takes about 32 hours or so. If you correlate that with the hourly rate, you'll see a, a close correlation there. About 32 hours per year for this type of facility, conducting the investigation and completing records and paperwork, filing reports for that. Lastly, for our dairy program, we are proposing two fee adjustments. For, one for cow dairy, that would be an increase from our current fee of $208 to $230. And goat dairy from $75 to $80. These have been discussed also by Environmental Health with the Creamery Association and they've agreed to these rates. And I understand the agreement is this will be about a three-year application period that these rates would, would be valid for before the county and the Creamery Association engage in discussions about fees again. With that, like to request, sorry for the past tense on this slide, but to conduct the public hearing, adopt the proposed fees with the two corrections offered today and authorize us to begin implementing these fees July 1st of 2020. That concludes my presentation, I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay, I, I had a couple of questions for you, Rob. The great presentation, thank you for coming today. It's always good to see a mixture of increases and decreases in the fee setting each year that you bring. It's never good to see all increases and I never have seen all decreases. So, it's good that there's a mixture, very nice for the majority of the restaurant facilities, which I know are particularly hard-hit in this COVID-19 situation, to be seeing a, a decrease in their fees. That's going to be a welcomed addition to those that do survive this outbreak. So, that was a point that I wanted to make. Some of the fees seemed a little shocking. I know that on the public or the clinic fee, the establishing of a $1,470 fee where there was no fee before. You know, a bit alarming, but then we have to consider the frequency of these tests. And that was one thing that you didn't really show in this chart that may be helpful. You know, when it's a, a one to $2 charge or three to four, you know, th- those different things, it's, you know, it doesn't really matter how many times that's occurring in a given year. But for an instance where there's no fee and now all of a sudden you're being charged $1,470, I'd be curious to know what, how many times that's occurring. Because that could be a real shocker if it's over 1,000 of those tests given a year. But if it's only one or two, you know, it's going to be shocking for those few, but not really that alarming if you kind of follow what I'm getting at. So, those are the few comments I wanted to make. Supervisor Crocker also wanted to comment as well.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a couple of questions in regards to the public lab fees. And I'll echo, before I get into that, I'll echo the chairman's comments. It's great to see that they're not all fee increases or new fees, 45 fee reductions, and this is very significant. So, as far as the public lab fees, are any of those COVID-19 related? As far as, as far as what, based on, on what we're doing?
I don't believe so, based on the timing. I do have Nelsa Gonzalez on the line for Environmental Health and Lab. She may be able to answer that question better.
No, I, I agree with you. Can you hear me okay?
Perfectly.
Okay, I'm on Zoom, so thank you for making the accommodation. I really appreciate the, the opportunity to join in. No, my understanding is, I agree with you, Rob, that they are not COVID-19 related.
Very good. And then there's been quite a bit of discussion on this board over the last, well, last month or two, but I think even prior to that regarding environmental health and looking at individuals that are selling roadside products. Are the environmental health fees enough to hire more employees to look at being more proactive? I know there's a shift as far as the risk level, but are we looking at increasing fees enough to be able to get additional employees?
So, that's a great question. And we are always looking towards having a better percentage of cost recovery overall within the division. These additional fee increases will bring us about $54,000 more in revenue that'll definitely go towards the overall cost recovery of the division. The reality is, is that it may take more than that. We do have some plans that we're considering and some different proposals that are being considered as well in regards to putting a more long-term solution with those unpermitted vendors. But, you know, every dollar helps and it'll definitely go towards that effort as well. But it, it's definitely not the, the full cost recovery that we would like to, to, to have eventually.
Thank you, Nelsa. So, I, I guess if we really want to make, do something about roadside vendors, then we're going to have to find additional revenue for you.
Yeah, and, and I know that there, we're definitely looking at what grants are available out there, looking at different opportunities and options that we have in that regard as well. But it's definitely going to take a good, hard look at our overall cost recovery within the division, which we do, we look at every year. And I think this is definitely moving us towards the right direction with, with these food fees.
And I would just say too, Nelsa, one thing that we, we mentioned in an earlier board meeting was just looking at different collaborations between other departments that may be out doing similar field inspections or having field interactions that could maybe collaborate and help offset some of the costs that you may be incurring, but perform some of the function for you, maybe targeting different areas of code that need to be enforced.
Right, absolutely. And we do collaborate a lot with our code enforcement departments throughout the county. We have a really great partnership with them. So, that helps us with staffing. So, if I need to send out, you know, one of my inspectors on the weekend or maybe two, code enforcement's really good about joining us as well. And then when we need to, we have our law partners that are also willing and able to assist when we need them. But I think joining partnership with all of the code enforcement departments is really crucial in getting, getting that effective enforcement going and consistent, effective enforcement.
Okay, thank you, Nelsa. Any additional questions from board members? All right, members of the public, this is an opportunity for you to speak or ask questions on this item. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak on this?
Right now, we do not, but we are on a slight delay still. Okay, I'm reporting, there's no calls.
Okay, thank you very much. I will now go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for action.
I would move approval of staff recommendations.
Here, we have a motion by Supervisor Shucklin, a second by Supervisor Townsend, sneaky guy with that computer screen. Please vote. Motion passes 5-0 unanimously. Thank you very much for that. Rob, appreciate the presentation there. We are now going to go back on our agenda, since we've taken our 9:30 timed item. Take up item three, this is public comment. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item within the jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors that is not on today's agenda. Public comment can and will be limited to three minutes. Madam Clerk, are there any, well, first of all, I'll ask, is there any public comment from members of the audience here today? Okay, any public comment from any member of the public on the phone today, Madam Clerk?
We do not have any public comment.
Okay, seeing no public comment, I will close the public comment period and bring it on to the consent calendar. This will take up items five through 13. Are there any items on the consent calendar that board members would like to pull for separate consideration or for correction? Or comment? Okay, seeing none, any interest from members of the public on pulling any item from the consent calendar? Okay, seeing no one, I will bring it back to the board for action.
I move for approval.
We got quick on that button that time.
Second.
Supervisor Valero, good job, way to beat Supervisor Townsend. Please vote. We have a motion by Supervisor Valero, second by Supervisor Shucklin. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much for that. We will now move on to take up item 14, which is a board member request. At this time, board members may make a referral to staff to have a matter of business considered for a future agenda. I do have a request from Supervisor Townsend.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, just a couple of things. I was thinking about trying to put together something for, for businesses especially and employers and employees alike. Sort of a place to consolidate information about where they can find help for recovery. Because there are many around out there, there's state, there's federal, there's, I, I saw one by the U.S. Chamber of Commerce that was out. So, there's various links and those, a lot of those links are being updated and changed. And so, I was going to bring this up. I do understand that, that the JIC has already started this. So, I, I'll just, I'll just throw my support behind it verbally about that. But I think it's a great idea to have it all in one place. Because a lot of people ask, they'll call and say, hey, how do I, how do I apply for this, how do I apply for that? It's nice just to have it in one spot. And so, if it's just on our website, Facebook, that's great, that was one. The second one was for us to also begin thinking about reopening strategies, potentially to share with the governor's office as, I know, as the president is, is putting it out to the governors. Our governor's already put out the, sort of the six-stage plan, which maybe isn't really specific, it's, it's fairly general without a lot of timelines, that maybe we could start thinking about it internally, putting together a plan with staff and doing some brainstorming. And when we get that together, that we could, if we're all in agreement, that we could share that with the governor's office, saying, here's what we're thinking about how it might work for rural counties. Because I, I think it will be a little different between our counties and, and say, some of the more, more urban areas. I know Mariposa is just now looking at one, looking at a three-stage plan for reopening. And theirs might be on the forefront of it because they haven't had any, any cases. So, but anyway, maybe we could start to coming alongside with that. And that's all I had.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Any good, Mr. CEO?
Mr. Chair, just following on Supervisor Townsend's comments, just so that the board is aware, the Joint Information Center and CARRY is, much appreciation to her for putting this together. I think they're pretty much on the precipice of that consolidated COVID-19, putting it on the county's page with all the links to everything for businesses, for people, situation reports. I think the only piece we were waiting for is, there's a piece in the middle of the page where we want to bring in the GIS mapping so that it can be there live on full-time. So, I think that's the piece she's trying to wrap up today, but that should be probably here in the next couple of days.
And I too, I've received several calls from supervisors from other valley counties and looking to do something on a consolidated basis in terms of a reopening strategy for what may work for really the central San Joaquin Valley. So, we can do something that makes sense for counties all in a cluster so that it can be a consistent landscape. All right, that concludes our open session items. Madam Counsel, do we have need for closed session at this time?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Items A, C, and D are off calendar. Item B will be heard and I do not expect any announcements out.
Okay, thank you for attending today's Board of Supervisors meeting. We will adjourn open session and now convene in closed session. Have a great day and be safe and healthy.